Hello everyone and welcome to our Wednesday night town hall meeting. I'm Valerie Aprahamian with Advocates for Angels, the IEP Navigator, and I help parents receive the IEP. Their child needs to thrive both in school and in life after high school. So let me just see here, why is this happening? I want to make sure that. Okay. So tonight, parents, I want to talk to you about a different subject. I've been teaching on the seven steps in the parent brigade, how to win what you want for your child's IEP. Talking about virtual schooling and the all the regulations and guidelines coming down from each state and the National Federal Department of Education. But tonight I want to talk about something a little different because right now, parents are really pissed off, to put it bluntly. Okay, so and I and with good reason, okay, with good reason. Moms and dads, we have a right to be really upset about what has happened to our kid over the past eight months now, since March, when schools closed. As I've been saying over and over again, IDA has been violated every day across the nation, hundreds of thousands of times across the nation. Just in, you know, my local school district alone, there are 7,500 kids on an IEP. So, you know, just think of how many kids at an IEP is in one state. Yeah, it's just, you know, thinkable of how many times IDEA is violated across the nation since schools have closed. Because they're not implementing our child's IEP. Our kids aren't getting their services. They're not getting in-person services. They're not implementing goals. They're not implementing accommodations. Our kids are regressing and our kids have not received an education. So parents have a right to be upset, absolutely. Now, when I teach parents in my IEP, Ultimate IEP course, is the module number one, which is advocacy, basically 101. The basis that I start with is the parent mindset. And it also is an advocate mindset, which is work collaboratively with your local school district. And and that has nothing to do with the law, has nothing to do with the IP process, has nothing to do with your child's education. It has to do with how to work with your local school district so you can win the game, so you can win the IP game. So it's it's a mindset that if a parent doesn't get to that mindset, you're never going to win the game. Or it's going to make it very, very difficult. It's going to make it more difficult for you to win the game. It's going to slow you down. It's going to delay you and it's going not going to behoove you to hold anger, resentment, and all the negative emotions that come up that we're faced with as we move through working with a bureaucratic institution of the school district and people who lie to us, mislead us, give us misinformation, deceive us, and stab us in the back. It's a hard, hard thing to do, parents, but that's what we have to learn to do if you want to be successful. Okay, so I've talked, I've touched on this a couple of times in the past, but I want to really go deep into it tonight. Because I feel like this is where we're really going to get tripped up right now. Because our emotions are so high right now about, you know, example, my local school district, we were going to open next week. And then again, turned around and said, nope, we're not opening now, we're still staying closed. So, you know, every time something like this happens, it raises those negative emotions again, that anger, that resentment, that frustration. And it just, it just keeps happening. There's no end in sight in this situation with school closures and the national pandemic. So that's why I'm going to focus on on that tonight. So first, I'm going to give you an example of how I got over my negative emotions in learning to advocate. So you can understand that I know where you're coming from. So I had several things that happened to Chanel as she was moving through the district in her school career. One of them was she was in grade school. She had Chanel had a life-threatening seizure disorder since she was diagnosed at less than three years old, when she got the diagnosis of autism and seizure disorder. And her seizures were so bad that she could actually die from her seizures. So it was extremely serious, her seizures. And we had a medical health plan on our IEP. The nurse was involved at every IEP meeting. She took meds for this and so on and so forth. It was all set up legally for her to be taken care of at school. But of course, what happens, did you think the school district followed the medical plan that was in the IEP? No, they did not follow it. So and she was in third grade, third or fourth grade. And and she had a seizure at school. And they were immediately, when she had a seizure, is very specific in her medical health plan, the steps they were to take when she had a seizure. Step number one, do this, step number two, do that, step number three, very clear on what they were supposed to do. Orders from the doctor and and orders from us as parents, what was to occur? They didn't follow any of those steps. They they brought her to the health office and they let her lay there having a full-on grandma seizure for, we don't even know how long this occurred, until they finally called us and said, we think Chanel has the flu. She's not feeling well. And we were like a block away from school. So my husband and I rushed down there and she's having a full-on grandma seizure in the nurse's office. Like I said, we have no idea how long she had been having, which is what happened to her. Because she would have a seizure and it would just continue and it would not not stop until she got medical assistance to stop it, which would would cause death if it goes on too long, a grandma seizure. That's how serious it was. And we said, what, did you call 911 yet? No, no, we didn't. So we called 911, they came, they had to give Chanel like two or three shots of very strong medication to stop the seizure. And every time she had a seizure, it would cause damage to to her brain cells. It would set her back and make her regress and and stop talking again and go into regression with all of the progress that she had been made. So it was a huge, not only life-threatening situation for her, but also regression in her progress. So how angry do you think I was in that situation? So that was one of the things. Another thing that happened to Chanel is when she was just a little, little kiddo, she was in kindergarten. And she, they picked her up on the bus. So she went on the little school bus because it was basically bitten a mile away from our house. So, you know, and I was a really young mom, stupid, I should have never let her go on that stupid bus. You know, I I really, you know, bring attention to parents, be careful of those school buses. I don't trust those school buses, I don't trust those school drivers, bus drivers. But she was going on the bus because I didn't know any better and I let her go on that dumb bus. And one day, a substitute was on the bus. Now Chanel was non-verbal, she had no language whatsoever, none. She couldn't say her name, she couldn't say where she lived, she couldn't say our name, nothing. And so she went on the bus, went with the substitute teacher and and she, when she was supposed to be coming home, she always got home at a certain time. Well, she doesn't come home on the bus at that certain time. So it goes 10 minutes, 20 minutes, a half hour, we call, where's Chanel? Oh, I don't know, the bus must be late. Hang up another 40 minutes, she's still not there, call back, she's still not here. So anyway, continuing this calling and they're not knowing, oh, she's coming, oh, she's coming, oh, she's coming. After an hour of her not being there, we call and we start, you know, raising our voice, she's still not here. Find the bus, where is she? And they they started calling now, remember, this was back in 19, the mid 1990s. They didn't have cell phones then and they had walkie-talkies, right? So they tried to contact the bus driver on a walkie-talkie and they couldn't contact the bus driver. The bus driver wasn't responding to the district office to locate Chanel and the bus she was on. And this went on for probably 20 minutes where they couldn't even locate the bus. Well, by this time, I'm losing my mind, thinking they can't find the bus, my daughter's on and it's been an hour and 20 minutes and we don't know where she is. So this is continues to go on. By an hour and a half, my husband and I said, we're calling the police now, we're calling the police because they still couldn't tell us where Chanel was. Then they they're telling us all this BS excuses that, oh, you know, the walkie-talkie isn't using because it must be out of range. Or, oh, it's a substitute and, you know, they don't know the rules and a bunch of excuses. It goes past an hour and a half. And they finally tell us, oh, she's at, she's at, she went to your house, but I guess that was your old address. Now, we had been moved over a year from that old address. And how she got our old address that we had lived at over a year before, I have no clue. But supposedly, she went to her old address and then she kept taking the rest of the kids home. So she took every other kid on the bus home, except for little baby Chanel, that's five years old. And Chanel can't talk and Chanel's the last child in the bus. And the stupid lady, bus driver, took her back again to our old house, that wasn't our house. Why, I have no idea. And we're screaming at the district office saying, we have a new address, this is our address now, this is our address. And so they kept telling us, they went to that address, they went to that address, that's not where you're at. And we, and it was just a big cluster mess, back and forth with this misinformation, this confusion, me losing my mind, not knowing where my baby was, that that was non-verbal. And so this went on and on and on. It ended up being almost three hours late that she was. And they finally, she, the stupid woman, ended up back at our old address again. And when the district said, she's sitting in front of your house. And I said, what is the address? Again, they tell us the old address. We said, tell her to stay there and not move, we are coming there to get her. So we went to our old address, there she was, sitting in front of our old address. I got out of the car, I grabbed Chanel out of the bus and she was all wet because she had soiled herself because she had been on the bus for so long and she was probably scared to death, sitting on that bus, the last child on the bus, couldn't talk, and I grabbed her and I looked at this woman and this woman looked like she was a drug addict. She had missing teeth, they were all decayed, greasy hair, just a mess of a person. And I was, I was just completely beside myself, looking at this woman, like where has my daughter been for the past three hours? That happened. And I have two other horrific stories, pretty much just as bad, but I'm not going to go into them because I don't want to, you know, I think I've made my point about the horrific things that I lived through with my local school district in raising Chanel in special education. So I I know the horrors that many parents go through in with our kiddos in special ed. And, you know, to top that off, you know, I'm not even talking about the legal stuff that we deal with, such as, you know, not giving them the proper education, not giving them the proper supports and services, not providing them with autism interventions on and on and on in terms of education. But there's all these other areas and issues that we might deal with in working with a district, an institutional bureaucracy, like the government agency of your local school district. Okay, so I had a lot of anger and resentment and and a lack of trust in these people. So in in working with, as I began to, you know, advocate further and and start, became incorporated as an advocacy agency, training other advocates to advocate, my biggest lesson and the hardest lesson that I ever learned. It wasn't learning the law, it was learning how to deal and work with collaboratively educators and administrators from my local school district or any school district, because they're all the same. When I go from district to district to district, it's deja vu. It doesn't matter what district I'm in, they all play the same games, they're all the same people and it's all the same story. So it doesn't matter what district you're in and it doesn't matter what state you're in because they're all the same. So. So my, my point is, is that I learned how to put the past behind me. And I learned how to have in the forefront of my mind that when I win and I get the kid everything they need and the district has to make it right, that is my reconciliation. That is my retaliation against the school district. When they have to fund, you know, an $80,000 program every year, or, you know, it's not even really the money. But if that's how much, if that's what it costs for a child to get their needs met, then that's how much it costs. But when I know that I went, that I won, and I got that child everything they need to reach their potential in life, that's a win. And that's putting it right and that's, and that is causing your local school district to do what they're supposed to do. And we won, they didn't win with their tricks and their little tactics that they use on parents. So that, that to me is is better than, and really, what else can we do, parents? You can't go to the past and change the past, it's not possible. So why hold that in you when you can't change it? And it's only going to make you sick, it's only going to hurt you in your IEP meetings. It's only going to hurt you in dealing with your IEP team, in dealing with your locals, administrators, and in moving forward in developing the IEP your child needs. So now let's look at it from more from a legal standpoint, okay? That's from a mindset, healthy mindset and health and wellbeing position. Now let's look at it from a legal standpoint. So so I took my, I got my special education law credential from William &amp; Mary Law School, which is headed up by Pete Wright, okay? And that's the guy who wrote From Emotions to Advocacy, as well as many other special education advocacy books. And I I've recommended before, From Emotions to Advocacy, it's the first book, if you haven't read books as a parent advocate, that's the book you should read to start with because it will give you a great foundation on how to become a successful parent advocate. Well, in his book, he has a whole section that's called Letter to the Stranger, okay? And he, so from the legal standpoint, he basically says the same thing I just said to you, but coming from the legal standpoint, which is, he always says, parents, you have to learn that you're a marketer and a salesperson. You have to market and sales your position to the administrator or the mediator or the judge. You have to sell your position to win what you want, okay? So when we're dealing with administrators, mediators, judges, your case carrier, your principal, or whoever it might be, you have to remember, these are people, right? We're dealing with human beings, we're dealing with people. Now, that person might have been a person that lied to you and got in your way and tried to mislead you. Or that person might have had nothing to do with what happened to your child in the past, right? So for example, when those things happened to Chanel and then I'm, I'm two years down the road and it's a new team and they had nothing to do with one of those horrific incidents that happened to Chanel, why would I be mad at those people when they had nothing to do with what happened two years prior? Why would I come into that team in that year with this anger and resentment and pointing the finger at them? Like they're all the same in the school district, when that's not really the case. You know, you have to think logically and our emotions don't let us think logically a lot of the time. Some people are really there with good intent and some people love being a teacher, love being a speech pathologist, love their job. And then others are playing the political agendas of the district and following the more unethical approach to the game, okay? So and it, and it's pretty evident, you can pretty much tell who's the one that's being unethical and who's the one that is, that it has your best interest and your child's best interests at heart. It's pretty easy to tell. Some of them are pretty deceitful and can put on a good front and smile and act like they care so much about your child. And really, they're stabbing you in the back, you know, behind the scenes. But as you move along, you'll be able, your intuition will be able to know who's who and what's what. But nevertheless, even those ones that you know are the ones that are being deceitful or the ones that are playing those games and and using tactics on you, I treat everybody pretty much the same. Because, and I'll tell you why, and it's the same reason why Pete Wright says it. You're in sales and marketing, okay? So if you are trying to have someone agree with you and you want the outcome that you want, which is for them to see your position as the right thing to do to grant you what you're asking for, that person has to have empathy and has to see your position and agree with you on your position, right? So if you are always pointing the finger at them, you're, you're, you're never happy about anything, even when you get stuff, when you, when you, when you win this or you win that, or they award you something that you asked for and this, and you don't even, you know, recognize it, or you're not grateful and happy for that. And you're just saying, go on to the next thing, well, now I want this, well, now I want that. And you have your big list of all your complaints of everything that you're complaining about. They see that and it's your paper trail. Everything's in your paper trail, guys. So when you go to, when we have an informal dispute resolution meeting and I pull out all of your paperwork, all of your paper trail, all of your documents, the tone of your emails, the tone of your letters and and how you write your parent agenda, anything that you write, there's a tone to how you write things. And if that tone is pointing the fingers, coming from an ungrateful place, a complaining place, that tone comes across loud and clear. And they are going to fight you more if you aren't being collaborative, being respectful, being appreciative and working as a team. Because my module number two is, in my ultimate IEP, is learn how to be the coach of your IEP team, okay? And a coach encourages their team, collaborates with their team, brings the team together as a unified team so you can win. You know, elicits a team spirit of rah rah, we're going to win, we're gonna, we're going to. And and for our kid, it's rah rah, we are going to see this child succeed. And when your child starts progressing and starts getting better and starts learning, everybody's happy and excited about it. Because the majority of them, you guys, they want to see, when when kids are a progress and they feel like, wow, look how much this kid's progressed. When I first got this kid, they were only saying three words and now they're talking in sentences. They feel a sense of accomplishment from that, you know? Now, I'm not saying there aren't the really, you know, evil ones that don't care. But because there are those that you will run across. But the, you know, what I'm saying is elicit the humanity in your IEP team. Once they start to have empathy towards your child, because when, when they see your position and you're coming across as a mom with with that, that's wanting to help your child and they don't see you as one of those moms that are constantly complaining, never happy, ungrateful, pointing the finger. When they see you as a mom that's trying to do the best for your child and and they know your position and your situation, that elicits empathy in them. And then empathy goes, elicits more emotions in them because everybody's a human being, right? And then emotions lead to their belief system. So they're going to start believing this mom is right, this is what this child really needs. And then beliefs lead to logical conclusions, which make decisions. So that is the way you win, parents, that's the way you win. So so when you learn how to be a good marketer and salesperson, you learn how to be collaborative, you learn how to be respectful, you learn how to write emails and letters and all of your paper trail in a respectful, professional way. So that when anybody looks back at the history of your evidence, which is your paper trail, they're going to see that you were a collaborative person who was always professional, who took their steps as as a parent advocate, implementing your parent rights in a respectful, professional way, that is going to get you to the win way faster than if you're that other kind of mom. So I hope that really makes sense to you guys because I know how hard it is. But that is how you win it, that's step number one as a parent advocate. A difficult lesson, a difficult skill to learn, but that is, is how you get to the yes. So now let's talk about emails and letters. So when, parents, when you write an email or you write a letter, your email and your letter better be written grammatically correct. You shouldn't have misspelled words, you shouldn't have wrong words, you should have correct punctuation. And you should be have a, have a, you know, good morning, Mrs. So-and-so, or hello, who you are addressing it to. And and then you write your email in a professional, respectful way, whatever your email says. And then you say, salutation, thank you very much for your time, thank you for supporting my child. Whatever nice thing you want to say to end it and then you put your name at the bottom. Write your emails in a professional way, not just one sentence, whatever you want to blast out to them and then that's it. That's that again, if a judge looked back at that, he would be like, oh, okay, that, that, that's that parent's attitude then. That's how that parent deals with her IEP team, okay? So when you start looking it from the outside in to how you're dealing with your team, you'll start understanding it looks a lot different if you're an outsider looking in to how you communicate with your IEP team. Let's look at a letter. So when you write a letter, parents, you always put the date on the top of the letter. I don't know how many times parents will send me their letters and there's no date on it. You always have to have a date on any communication that you send because it's your paper trail. If you don't know that, it could have been written five years ago or couldn't have been written last week. You have to have the date on every piece of communication that you write. Now, of course, in an email, the date's already there for you. But if you write a letter, you put the date on it or any kind of doc, put the date on it. And then you're going to want to put again, your opening, good morning, hello, so-and-so, whoever you're writing it to. And then you're going to write your, your letter and then again, you're going to write a salutation at the bottom. You're going to write your name, you're going to sign your name. I mean, so many times I see parents just send this list of stuff, it's not addressed to anybody, there's no date on the top and there's no sign. So and you put at the top regarding your child's name. You put, you got to put who this is about, it's about your child. So, you know, that's just basic letter writing of, you know, learn how to write a proper letter format and the, and the way you write letters professionally and respectfully. That's going to get you a long way when parents learn how to do this correctly. And it's not that hard, guys, it's really not. So again, I really recommend you get the From Emotions to Advocacy, you look up the Letter to a Stranger chapter and Pete goes into these great, great suggestions on how you write that letter to a stranger. And so the stranger is, who's ever reading the letter, right? So it it could be your district director. And if it goes to mediation or hearing, it's going to be the mediator or the hearing officer or it's going to be a principal or whoever it may be. And you, and there's specific ways to write that letter to elicit the empathy, to elicit that person to see your position and then to come to a decision where they agree with you. And you're going to write your letter in a specific way that you're going to be showing the facts of why that you're upset, why you're making this request or you have this concern and why they should help you to do something about it. And you use words like illicit, words that you need their help, you'd, please address this for me. You know, I'm very concerned about this. You know, I'm very concerned about this, this, or this. And it's not finger pointing, it's asking for things to be addressed, or asking for things to be awarded or granted. And again, Pete goes into very specific terms and steps and suggestions on how to write a successful letter to a stranger. So that's what I wanted to focus on tonight, guys. Because as I said, I know we all have really high emotions right now. Things are not good, our kid, most of our kids are not doing well. This is a really crappy situation we're in. But, you know, if we can get, you know, and also, it, it doesn't help us. It makes us sick, makes us unhealthy and, and have a unhealthy mindset. And then all that does is trickle down to our children, because our children are very intuitive. They feel our emotions, and then they act up. They, their behaviors increase, they'll escalate in their non-compliant behaviors or their emotions, because they don't know how to deal with it either. In all this, you know, situation we're in, you know, it's the worst thing we can do for our kids, for us to be, have an unhealthy mindset, to be stressed out, and to have these negative emotions, you know? And then I don't know, you know, whoever, you know, I always go to, because I'm a very spiritual person, so I go into, you know, and do have my practice, my spiritual practice, my meditation. If you're, you know, whatever, you know, spiritual practice you have. I, you know, if we ever need it, we need it now, because we can't do this alone. You know, we have to take time for self-care right now, which is super hard, because we're so busy and overwhelmed with our days. You know, for me, I mean, my self-care went out the window in March. So I'm always having to get on myself to balance out, I have to take care of myself, or I'm gonna crash. Because every day I'm sitting at this, my desk, on this computer, working my butt off 24/7, and on the weekends. So yeah, I, I'm telling myself this to you guys, you know? Self-care is really important right now. Because again, that's just, that's not gonna help us, and our kids are going to feel it. And we, and, you know, they don't need that, they really don't need that. I know we're all juggling so many plates right now, we have too much happening. But, you know, we gotta hold it together, guys, because if we don't hold it together, then our whole family falls apart, right? So it's, it's on us, you know, the women are the warriors. And the women, you know, we are, we're it, you know, we're, we hold everything together. So it's a, it's a pep talk for you guys, you're all doing amazing. We, you, you're strong, amazing women. And I just wanna bring that to your attention, just for you, your wellbeing, your child's wellbeing, and moving forward, working with the school district, and, and that's how you're gonna win. So just, just think about that, and, and try some of those practices. And, and look up Letter to a Stranger. If anybody, any of you did my ultimate IEP, I have a whole, like I said, chapter two, and I'm sorry, module one and module two, talks about everything I just said. And in the Parent Brigade, I also have a lot of that information. I have four audios on the Parent Brigade that talks about what I just talked about. Putting the past behind you, being professional and respectful, how to become a coach of your IEP team. You can look on the Parent Brigade website, and you can find a lot of that info on there. That will also go over what I just talked about. Okay, guys, so who has any, I'm gonna take two questions tonight, because I have lots of work to do, you guys. I have two IPs tomorrow, two IPs on Friday. So I'm gonna take two questions of anybody that wants to talk about what I just said. Anybody have a comment or a question, or wants to share anything that they're going through, their story of anything that happened recently?
Valerie.
Hi, Holla.
Hi, but you know, that, that was very, really great advice. Because a lot of times, I'm like, you know, in my head, I'm not taking care of myself. My, my attitude becomes, you know, my, my kids feed off of my energy, my husband feels it. And I have to like step back and say, you know, I need to take care of myself, so I can function for these kids, for my house, for me. So that was a very good advice. I pre, it's nice to like be reminded, you know, with those small little things, like do what you need to do to take care of yourself. And in regards to the tone of the email, that's a really good point, because sometimes, you know, we're so angry or mad, or how could you? And it comes off wrong, you know, the way they read it. So that's a good reminder to like, you know, check yourself, be professional. You know, so that was, that was really good advice, so thank you. But I did have a quick question, you know, in regards to data collection. If I'm taking videos to show how Zoom is not working, do you recommend we share videos of them, of my child, you know, smacking me because he's being triggered, because I'm pushing him? I mean, is that gonna come off as him being aggressive? Do you think that's a good video to share, or no?
Yes, it is. All of those videos that you make of your child at home, not being successful in virtual schooling, all of those are very powerful evidence, very powerful evidence to, to prove, that's proof. They can't, they can't argue with a video. So it's to show that they're not meeting the needs of your child, that the behavior is impeding their ability to access their education. And so it's proof right there, because what are they doing about that?
So they're not gonna like, look at him as like, oh, he's the aggressive child, he's the violent child. Look at how he smacks his mom in Zoom sessions.
No, no, that, that isn't, okay. It would be termed aggressive, yes, but you know what? Your, your child and, you know, hundreds and hundreds of other kids.
Yeah.
All the kiddos that are non-verbal are hitting and smacking their kids.
Definitely.
And not even kids that are non-verbal, kids that are verbal are doing it. So that, that's what's happening right now. It's not like it's unusual. It's very typical of kids on the spectrum doing that right now. And, and it's also the responsibility and duty of the school district to address it and to do something about it.
Definitely. Okay, makes sense. Thank you so much.
We wanna use those videos, absolutely. And I wanna go back to a point Holla made was in your emails and letters, to, to make sure that you, I like that point that she said, to, we, a lot of times we write emails when we're angry, and, you know, which is, we all do it, right? So don't send it, don't send it when you write, when you're angry. That's your draft, that's your draft, right? So then, then you, then you go away, and then you cool off a little bit, you come back and you read it. You might still be mad, and you still can't write it right. So then you go away. You wait a little bit until you're in a place where you feel like you can come from a respectful, collaborative position, making your, your statement clear of what you are, what, what has occurred, what you're requesting, and why you're requesting it. And again, in that Letter to a Stranger, it'll have, these are the components of what an email or letter should have. And it's basically those things, what, what are you requesting, or what is your concern? What do you want them to do about it? And the facts of why they should do it, okay? And that's what it should be included in your email or your letter. And until you can write that without a tone of anger, then you wait, and you don't send it until you could write it that way. And, and then you make sure you do your spell check, you do your grammar check, and you make sure that it, that it's right before you send it. So that was a good point too, Holla, I didn't say that actually.
Yeah, Valerie, Ted just reminded me that today. He said, Liz, when you write, you're, you're writing it as if a judge is reading it, because that, where, that's where it might ultimately land. So always write it, state your points, state them clearly, and always be, have a good tone, and, 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 and that's who your reader might be. So that's who you're writing it for. So yes, this was a very important, it, it's funny, because Ted just said that to me today. So yeah, it's amazing how you, but this, what you're talking about today is, I think, what we all need to hear, because emotions are running really high right now. And so we have to just stay calm. And because we end up looking like the, the silly one when we're in the IEP and we're getting dramatic and we're getting, yeah, we, we just, we're not helping our case.
That's right.
Yeah, and I, and I always have to remember that, and I have to bring myself back down, and I hope I do a good job. You're always there, but, but, you know, and I, and I try really hard. It, it's hard, it's the hardest thing in the world. But when you're talking about your son, and you're talking about what they're not doing, and, but you, but you always have to be the better person, and you have to remember that. So, thank you for reminding us.
Oh, thank you, Liz. Yes, and I like that point you brought up too, Liz, because I should have gone deeper into that. If you are all coming across angry, pointing the finger, emotional, you will get labeled. They will label you the crazy parent, the complaining parent, the, you know, the out of control parent. You don't want to get labeled that. Not, not that you, you don't have a good reason to be acting that way, because we know we do have a good reason to be acting that way. But you, they, they'll turn it around and make it your fault, that you're a crazy parent. And they're doing everything they're supposed to do, but you're unstable, you know? And they will do that, they will use it against you. And, and which will only delay you getting what you want for your child. So you never let them use anything against you, ever. And you make it so you are right, you are, you, you do everything correctly. You are respectful, you're professional, you communicate, and you're collaborative. And they're the ones that are failing to do what they're supposed to do. So you never give them a reason to make it your fault.
And if you come across as a crazy parent, or, I don't know, you have to be very careful, because the school district will call CPS on you if they think you're unstable. I seen it here in San Diego.
Yes, they, they will, they will. It happens in every district. And that's, that's the most I lose my mind when they do that to my clients. Like, how dare they call CPS on a mom that is struggling to meet the needs of her child, and they're failing to meet the needs of the child? And they use it as a retaliation against moms who are advocating strongly for their child. It's so unjust, it's so wrong, and that's where our system fails us once again. It's stupid CPS system. And, and, but you know, there, there are, every, every time that's happened to one of my clients, we've come out smelling like a rose, because I coached my clients, clients through it, and you gotta really be in control. They'll, they'll come, they're do, they'll do their stupid investigation, and you just are calm, cool, collected, you let them in your house. They come in and walk around, they talk to your kid, even if your kid is non-verbal, they'll talk to your kid. And, and they'll get, take their little notes, and then you just, you, you basically say, the school district is working very adversarially with me. The school district, you know, this is the situation where I'm in right now. You explain it to them that you're in a battle with your local school district, because they did this, they did that, they did this, they did that. Just like you're doing your sales and marketing again, just as if you were, I just talked about that in your Letter to a Stranger. And you get, you again, get on the side, get that CPS worker on your side. As a mom, they'll start, oh, really? Oh my God, they did that? And you get them on your side, and then they, they just go, written off, there's nothing here. There's nothing here to see. This mom's only advocated for their child, this mom's a great mom. You know, we went to the home, the needs of the child are being met. The, the mom is perfectly fine and stable and mentally intact, and, you know, a, a, a typical parent. And then it goes away. So, but if you, if they, they open that door, and you're like, that school district did this and that, and you're all emotional and flipping out and, and crazy, then that's not gonna be good. Because yes, they can take our kids away. It's a scary, scary thing when CPS is called. But we can win that too. But again, it comes down to us learning to control our emotions, and learning to keep our cool, and stay calm, cool and collected, and, and, and elicit the empathy of that other person in how the school district is working, how the broken system doesn't work for our kids. The bureaucracy and the political agendas of the school district is, is what is going on in this situation. And then people change their position, and then you, you will always win. And so it always comes back to that key about, about our, our emotions and staying collaborative and respectful.
What if they're not being collaborative with you, and you're being collaborative with them? And they keep acting like idiots, and like they don't know what's going on?
That doesn't matter. You stay collaborative, and you stay respectful, because they end up looking like the bad guys, not you. You want them to stick out like a sore thumb and look like the idiots and the bad guys, not you. So you, I've had in, in IEP meetings, people be completely rude, disrespectful to me. And, and then I stay very calm, very collaborative, very professional, I don't raise my voice, I don't get upset. Now, there are times that I, I mean, I don't do that every time I'm human too, right? I've gotten mad before. But most of the time, I will stay collaborative, because when you do that, that other person looks like a total idiot. And so they're the ones that end up looking bad, not you. You never give them a reason. You say, well, the mom was being that way too. Look at the mom, arguing. The mom raised her voice, the mom got mad, mom yelled, you know? That, they will turn it around, and all the focus will be on you, and another focus will be on the other person that was, that was inappropriate. It'll all be on you, because that's what they do. That's the game they play.
And then they start taking it out on your child, though. So like, because we've been advocating for Julian, you know, now, you know, two people, service providers are acting like real jerk, jerks towards him, and I don't, you know, I don't appreciate that. So it's not his fault that they're a bunch of idiots, and they can't get it together. And now that I'm advocating, they're mad, because they have to do their job, and then they're gonna take it out on my son?
Well, first of all, they can't, they can't take it out on him, and if they are, then we.
They are.
Well, then, do you have evidence of that?
Yeah, Samantha, the FBA person saw it all, how rude, how mean they were, yeah.
And this just happened recently, right?
This just happened last week. And then again, this week, I could tell, as soon as I got on there, because I needed to ask them a question, you know, with their little attitudes. And I'm trying to figure out how to log in for Zooms and trying to get it right, because it's still not right, the way she has it. And you know, she's just giving me her crap-ass attitude, like always, but then she starts doing it towards my son? No, I'm not okay with that.
Well, if that's, if that's happening, Angie, then we need to write, it's, it's called a compliance complaint and an Office of Civil Rights complaint. That is, it's like an emergency or an urgent complaint, so it doesn't go through just in the big stack. It goes immediately to their desk and saying that there's retaliation happening and mistreatment of a child. And it goes to the top as a priority to be addressed. That's what needs to happen then. So I, I didn't know that was happening, so that's what we should do. If that's true, but we have to have proof that it's happening. We can't just say, well, we saw it. We have to have proof that it's happening. Because it, it can't just be your word against them.
Well, I have a witness here. The, the FBA person saw it. She knew right as soon as she walked in. She goes, she, she, she said it, I can feel the disconnect between, you know, your son and the two service providers. You know, what's kind of, what's going on, she asked me. So if, if I can feel it, and she can feel it, then he can feel it, and that's why he's being so resistant towards them.
Mm-hmm, yes, undoubtedly. So aren't you taping all that stuff through the house cameras?
Yep.
So you have, you have video of her voice, of their voices, right?
I do, yes, I do.
Well, that's evidence. That's evidence.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would use those tapes. So go back and get those tapes, cut those tapes, and send them to me, so I can.
Okay.
Because it has to be, you know. Because it has to be, you know, I mean, it has to be, um, a legitimate complaint. So send them to me.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there. But that's anytime, parents, that you feel your child is being retaliated against, that, that is not okay. And you should immediately take action on that. Immediately. So actually, the first step you would do is you would take it to the, um, director of, of your, of the school district first. And if you don't get resolution there, then you would write a complaint. So, um, I was just saying, we're gonna skip to writing a complaint because we've already been dealing with the director, um, for a long time. And she isn't, she's just dragging her feet, not doing anything. So.
Yeah, on purpose too.
Yeah, so. But the typical step would be, uh, taking it to the director. Because sometimes they'll fix it right away. They'll, they'll address it right away, which is what should happen. It should be addressed right away. Um, and then if it's not, then you would send the, you would write a, a formal complaint to the state and to the office of civil rights.
Well, we'll see, we'll see this new case manager who comes on, her attitude and all that. But I'm not gonna take much more of this. My son has already been through enough and so have I, and so has our whole family. So, and he's only seven years old.
No, no, you don't have, you shouldn't. You shouldn't. That is completely inappropriate, not acceptable. And, uh, it needs to be addressed immediately.
Yeah, and that's why she's off of the team, off.
Right, yeah, she's not gonna be there anymore.
Nope, thank God.
That will be taken care of pretty much. If it's, is she the only one doing that?
Pretty much just her, yeah.
Okay, well, that's why she's doing it. Because she's mad, because now she's off. Because you won, you won.
Mm-hmm.
She doesn't like that you won.
Yeah.
You know what you should do then, Angie? You should just say, um, I'm not, my son isn't seeing her anymore. I'm not going, you could say, that, I'll say it for you. Uh, we're just gonna say that, um, twice or however many times I need to get the facts from you. That this is what has occurred. And, uh, you're, and he's not going to be seen by this person until the new person comes on.
Yeah, which the new person's already on, new person's gonna be on tomorrow with him, so.
But isn't she gonna be there too?
Probably guiding the new person, but it should be the new person giving the services now.
Yeah.
I'm gonna see tomorrow because I'm home. So I'll, it was, it was Mercedes on Tuesday, but I'll check tomorrow to see if it's the new girl.
Okay, so it is, it, it should stop. It shouldn't happen anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else? Have any comments? Okay, guys, well, um, thanks, um, for attending tonight. And, uh, um, do your homework and maybe next, um, let me see if there's any things in the chat. I might see if I can. Yeah, I think I answered everybody's questions. Um, so, um, well, I'll come back and we'll, we'll talk about this again next Wednesday. Because I, I think this is a big subject, a big topic. And, uh, we'll talk more so we can support each other in this. Because it's, you know, you can't, you just, it's not something that you can address in one day. It's, it's a, it's a process and it's something we need to work on all the time. And I think it's a good topic, um, for us to focus on in the, uh, coming weeks. So thanks, guys. And I'll see you next Wednesday. Everybody take care.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good night.